You're up, Commissioner.
Okay. Don't see any changes to the agenda. And the first item we have on our agenda is the Board of Ambulance.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented and then enter into the Board of Ambulance.
We have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's just our ambulance monthly payment, which is a big payment.
Saving lives. Every time you write that check, you're saving lives. Just think of it like that.
That didn't help.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the ambulance claims and exit the ambulance board.
We have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have our Commissioners' Report, Invoices. And I had a few questions and I got them answered. There was a couple of mileages in here, but they had county vehicles, all but one. And that's when they went to rent vehicles for one of the entertainers.
Oh.
There wasn't enough vehicles to rent, and so an employee used her own personal vehicle to transport that entertainer because they didn't want a county emblem on the outside of the vehicle that they was transporting the entertainer on. So I had a discussion about that one. Had an attorney go to Boise and he bought fuel, but he used his own credit card but bought it for, he was in a county vehicle. We have $110,000 here, and I believe it's the final payment on the AC project out of the jail. So I think we're closing that one out. We have something I think that we need to have a conversation about is this is juvenile detention and a petty cash for fuel to post academy. And there was two receipts there for $25 and $50, but petty cash grows.
Why would we do that?
It should just turn the receipt in and get a check, not a... So that's a conversation, both the jail and the juvenile detention. Talk about petty cash. I hate that every time it comes up in front of us. And then the last one was $400,000 for the sewer system up at the landfill, or up at the event center. They've completed everything but the landscaping and we still owe them $100,000, so we're not paying them the $100,000 until the project's finished. And then the other one is the detention center route, but $265,000. So some of our big projects that we've had sitting out there.
So come to a close.
Will come close. Other than that, we have a few bills. Our emergency management has a couple. And then CCOG, pay them for some of their services. I gotta talk to Nancy for a second. We just pay the bills without the whole thing being a part of the record?
Yeah, or if anybody requests it, we can adapt that.
Okay. Yeah, just put my son's name there.
It's probably okay if there's no information in here because this is all on the public records.
Now he shows up. I wanna talk to you for a second.
Jeff, do you know what this is? See these two down here? This is stuff from Wes, so it must just be some kind of emergency. I'm not asking about management's training or why we would need something like that.
Probably part of his Homeland Security grant.
Probably part of his Homeland Security grant. Oh, yeah, you might be right on that.
All right. What I was questioning is, because these have some names on them, they're likely to be part of the public record.
I don't even call Wes. What is this one?
Keller and Booklets.
Yeah, I don't know why they need that.
We did it before over at the juvenile detention.
Well, I'm just gonna call them by what's all about.
That's fine. My only question on these, because these have some names on it. I questioned it, but it weren't good. That's why I talked to Brian. Just to explain on this one a little bit. It's, this one is a pretty high bill, but this is the individual to most John's cases. And so he doubled his load. And that's why, that's why we're so high right now. But that will come down.
Did I say that? Yeah.
All right. Motion on Commissioners' Report and Invoices.
Mr. Chair, make a motion we approve the Commissioners' Report and Invoices as presented.
We have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have salary rate approval forms. And in the salary rate approval form, there's also one intern, the one that Emma had talked about.
Well, there's a class we need.
Yeah. When I saw Mr. Perry requesting the alcohol license. Motion on salary rate approval forms.
Mr. Chair, make a motion we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented.
We have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then we have alcohol licenses.
Mr. Chair, make a motion we approve the alcohol licenses.
We have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the final report, pay periods 5/20 to 6/02.
Mr. Chair, make a motion we approve payroll report as presented.
We have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Good morning.
Good morning. Made her home safe?
Yes.
Got to the wedding?
Yes.
All's well, huh?
Everything's good, yeah. It was very nice to be able to be there for that. So I have Ken Keller with me this morning. One of the things that we thought it would be sort of timely to address with you all is flooding and our role when we're experiencing that in the county. So I'll turn the time over to Ken and then I have just a couple of quick updates for you about some other things that we're involved with.
Yeah. Just kind of some diagrams, but yeah, thanks for allowing us to come. So there's three basic ways that floodings, flooding and floodwaters can affect septic systems. The first way would be flooding of the tank. So that could happen by surface water entering from the manhole riser. If you have cracked or broken tanks that aren't in great shape. But inside the septic tank, there's three different layers. The bottom layer is what they call the sludge layer. These are great names. Sludge layer, broken down, organic material. The middle layer is what goes out to the drain field. That's the clearest water, just water, wastewater, but clear. And then there's the scum layer on the top. So when the tank floods, the level of the tank rises, that scum layer on the top goes up over the baffles and out into the drain field, causing it to plug up. Can cause damage to the tank and then, or the septic system itself. The other way would be the floodwaters rise, or floodwaters cause the groundwater level to rise. So it's kind of where the water coming from the home is going down and the floodwaters come up. They kind of meet. The only where for that to go is back into the home, which causes extreme damage, or onto the ground surface where contaminating, can contaminate surface water, hazardous to humans. The other way is the surface water flooding over the top of the drain field. So you, in that case, you have too much water coming down, plus the water coming from the house. So you'll get water backing up into the house. Can also get surface water contamination from lakes, streams, ponds, as that water recedes and finds its way to the streams. So in all these cases, it's damaging for, you know, the homeowners. It's expensive repairs. Some of these things, you know, if the drain field floods, if you limit your use, floodwater is received, give it time, weeks to months in a lot of cases, the system can recover and continue to be used, but not always. Sometimes it's replacing the drain field. So in these situations, we make these a priority, really help these people out, work with them. Maybe we can find a location on the lot that's a little more, a little safer from floodwaters. Maybe there's some burning they could do to help prevent water from coming back into their, into their homes, flooding the drain field. So we'll work with them on that, try and make the best decisions we can as to how to fix the, you know, limit the future damage, I guess. The other issue with flooding is the contamination of private wells. So, and that could be chemical or biological. As those floodwaters, you know, you'll have contamination on the surface and if it's near the well, it can reach the casing and then go straight down into the water table. But we will get notifications from DEQ and from the labs of public water systems when, say, E. coli is detected. And this seems to be happening a little bit more lately. Like City of Blackfoot's had two or three. There was one in the City of Arco, and I think in Franklin, down in Preston, near Preston. So we'll get these, we'll get notice of these E. coli hits in their water system. We will then call all the food establishments that are on that system, daycares, childcare facilities, schools would be part of the list. Call them and just work really closely with them, give them guidance on how to continue to operate, but operate safely, which, you know, boiling your water, maybe you get the big five gallon jugs of water, you can use that, you know, like collagen water or whatever. And to give them guidance to help them to be able to still continue to operate, but just do it safely. So that's kind of how we work through boil orders. But on large systems, you know, large E. coli boil orders, that's quite a bit. Takes us quite a bit of time, but we make that a prior priority as well. Like as soon as we get it, we get as many people together and we start making those calls. And we feel it's important to talk to them too, because they're gonna have questions.
You get a lot of phone calls.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot of phone calls. And, you know, like convenience stores, there's nothing they really can do for their soda machines. Like they can't use those. But there's other things they can, they can do as far as boiling water and things like I guess the other issue, I was gonna, I didn't make copies of this one I should have, but, you know, septic systems and floodways, flood zones. So FEMA has pretty good maps of the flood zones. I'll pass this around. There's an area that's a floodway. It's in the red hashes. And no drain fields can go in those areas. But if, but if you can compare these, this, there's a subdivision area income that floodwaters are creeping towards a new subdivision.
They're going down now.
Yeah.
Oh goodness.
It's kind of hard to overlay these two, but the flood zone creeps into that pretty So people could still get septic permits, but they would be at high risk. So I don't know, maybe they could look at where we made up or something to help protect it, but.
Right now's the best time to figure out where you're gonna put a house.
Do where it is.
It's high water.
There's that road. I mean, it's pretty close. I haven't been driven by there about a week or so, but yeah, it's creeping up there pretty, pretty close.
I drive by it every day. I live in Incan.
Are there any questions for me?
How many septic systems have we had affected this spring in Bannock County?
In Bannock County? None that we've heard of yet, heard of yet, that I know of. But I think that's still coming. Like once they start, really start to recede, it'll probably be a little bit more. We do get a lot of calls about it though. Why I think we'll hear more about it is the calls we're getting right now is like, hey, where is my septic system? So I suspect they're starting to have issues and so they want to know, okay, where is this? Is it in the floodwater? Kind of preparing for it.
So with the E. coli mentions, yeah, let's just assume it's somewhere down from Income because they've had some issues with their entire septic system getting close to the floodwaters and they've had some issues. How, how would you deal with something like that downstream from that?
So the issue with that is a lot of the downstream is private wells.
Right.
And so there's no, there's no testing unless, that goes on there, unless the homeowners test. And we put some things out on social media and we count some more that just reminds people, hey, it's a good idea to test your well. It's a good idea to test it regularly anyways, but especially maybe right now would be a good time to like see what's going on. We have been getting a few calls too. I would say increased number of calls on how to chlorinate wells. One person called me, they were concerned that too many people were chlorinating their wells because he was, felt like he was getting a chlorine smell from his private well. And that was in the Gap area. But that's the problem you have with the private wells, there's no testing. And so if people aren't thinking, oh, I should test my well, could be some contamination, then yeah, it just goes on. There's also, you could do surface water testing. In those cases, you'll get E. coli quite a bit, cattle, things like that. There is ways to tell if it's human or other sources, but nobody's really going that far. And that would be a DEQ issue for surface water.
Well, I had a sister that had that problem. And what it was is that her neighbor brought his feed lot right over 10 feet away from her well.
Yes.
It was my uncle. So he moved his cows and took care of the problem. But I'm in, in the City of Incan, we've had boil orders before. And that's what I wondered, because Incan has two wells, well, two wells in the, right there in the city park, and then two wells right up from where this water has been coming up there off the Gilbert project.
You mentioned the chemical part of it too. If old vehicles or things like that are being flooded too, that's gonna find its way to surface water as well.
In some of these areas, well, let me ask you this first. Do you guys, when someone asks for a building permit in an area that would be impacted by these problems, do you guys comment on that?
On high groundwater? So on new subdivisions, we would. If it's just a, if it's somebody applying for a septic permit, we wouldn't comment other than just working individually on that septic application. But we, we have people dig 10 foot deep test holes on each lot. And what we're looking for there is groundwater. And a lot of times you won't see groundwater, but if you look close enough, which we do, you can, you can see signs that there's been groundwater. It's called modeling in the soil. And it's like, if you were looking at the sidewall of a test hole, you'll see these. Well, one sign is these rust colored splotches. And if you pick away at that wall, you can see behind that, that there's, there's these rust colored splotches all over. And that's as the groundwater rises and falls each year, it leaves behind iron oxide. So you'll see that in the soil. The other way is if you see like gray, bluish gray soil, that's a sign of soil being underwater for extended periods of time. So it does, it's not getting that oxygen, so it turns kind of a grayish color. So on an individual basis, we're looking to see, is there groundwater? Or is there signs the groundwater has been there? And then based on those levels, we'll set that drain field high enough above it that it shouldn't be affected. And the wastewater will be treated before it gets to the groundwater.
But it sounds like in some cases, maybe it's set, we're setting it at a certain level and saying it shouldn't be affected, but then maybe it is affected because you have excess flooding or whatever. Is that right?
So if I understand you right, like in some areas, some areas are definitely...
So you're trying to set these fields at an area where it's not gonna be impacted, we're not gonna have this E. coli outbreaks and those types of things.
Right, yes. And so...
But I'm assuming there have been, it sounds like there have been cases where, yeah, we set them at a certain level, but then excessive flooding or whatever happened, and there were these E. coli.
Yeah, because drain fields can be put in flood zones.
I'm sorry?
A septic system can be installed in a flood zone, but not a floodway. The floodway is like extreme likelihood of flooding. Floods, there's different flood zones and some of those, you know, flood every, every once in a while. The Idaho rules, you know, prohibit the floodway, but it's still in the flood zone. When we, when we do a subdivision and there's, or a new home, and we see signs of groundwater or groundwater, we have them monitor that groundwater level. So we will see a rise and then a peak and then a drop off in the, in the groundwater level. So we will have pretty good data of how high that comes. And then we set the drain field above that. In cases where we don't see groundwater, that's when we're looking for the signs of it. And sometimes that's even, there is no signs. Maybe, maybe it comes up in the gravel layer, which you won't see the modeling. So it could be very difficult.
So you said we can put septic systems in flood zones. We can build in flood zones. Though there's some flood zones that in this county that you guys have looked at and you'd say, really, we should not be building there because the risk is too high?
The risk of flooding is too high. Yeah. Yeah, that's the floodway.
So, but in your opinion, we should not be building it?
Yeah. And if it meets the rules, we couldn't deny the permit, meeting those rules.
The landowner, and sometimes you guys, both bring in engineers. I mean, so to, if there's a question.
Yeah.
Because we've had landowners that have said, wait a minute, I brought my engineer in. They've engineered this, which you're not an engineer. You can't go against an engineer's stamp of approval. So, and then the other part, when you're talking about going in ahead of the, I guess during the, the beginning stages of construction, they're the governing board. So they can't really submit a paper denying something without having the application and going through the process.
Right.
Kind of like us, we can't get involved until something comes before us as our assigned responsibility. So they're kind of in a spot there a little bit where their personal opinion may say one thing, but the, the landowner's rights.
You know, there's this potential for flooding or high groundwater. Really try to work with them and make sure they're aware of all the risks.
Okay, thank you. Maggie?
Yeah, two updates real quickly. So we continue to do work on the opioid crisis in our communities. And so we've been partnering with the Fortuna Valley Interfaith Fellowship and the Pocatello Police Department and Idaho State University to do a series of town hall meetings to just provide education to people on what the situation is in our communities. We did two of those meetings in May. We have two next week. One on Tuesday that will be at Poki High, and then one on Thursday that will be just across the street at the LDS Church. And then two more in July, one at Marshall Public Library and one at the First United Methodist Church. So we're just, it's the same presentation and information at each one of those meetings, just trying to make it widely available for people. So hopefully, if they're interested, they can find a time that works for them.
Would you email those dates to Christie?
Sure.
And then Emma can put them out on our website.
Yeah.
So that we can get invitations out there too.
Yep, I can sure do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we've had a pretty good response and people have lots of questions. And so I think it's been a good approach to have the law enforcement perspective, the sort of historical pharmacologic perspective, addiction counseling perspective, and then the public health perspective with the data for our county. So, so I think that that's been a good approach. The other thing I wanted to let you know, we just found out yesterday, we've been selected to participate in a process to become what's called a smoke-ready community. So we'll be working with two counties from Montana and one from Wyoming to create sort of a response plan to addressing wildfire smoke and impacts to health because we know that it does have negative impacts on especially respiratory health when wildfire smoke is in our region for a prolonged period of time. So we'll be working closely with that and I'm sure we'll be reaching out to Wes for his participation in that process as well. But I think it's a good project to be working on because it's definitely something that in the last five years, we've seen an increase. Last year wasn't too bad, but the year before was really bad. So hopeful that we can come up with a plan for just communicating... hopeful that we can come up with a plan for just communicating to people about when air quality is too poor to really be outside and doing things that we all love to do, like um, just, just sharing that information.
The last session of, of the conference last week was Officer Kemp's from the State Police.
Yes.
And he's more than willing, he's gonna be down here in a couple of weeks to do some presentations and stuff. And so I don't know, it might be worthwhile to have a conversation with him. And then he works with our local State Police and stuff with their task force. But he had a pretty good presentation.
Okay, that's great. Um, the way that this Fort Worth Valley Interfaith Fellowship series came about is Chief Shai, as a member of the Governor's Task Force, Esto Perpetua. He came back from those meetings and convened a group of stakeholders and um, it included like the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, the hospital, School District 25, um, the city. And um, so, so there have been a lot of other partners involved. And we did a town hall meeting at City Hall last October. But this is just, it's been something that those three agencies, ISU, us, and the city have been able to commit to doing these town hall meetings. But I know the State Police and the Sheriff's Department are really important partners in that as well, and they have been involved. They're just not presenting at these meetings. So if you have information on when he's gonna be here, if you could have somebody send that to me.
Get ahold of him, get ahold of you and so.
Okay.
I thought I'd bring it up in our meeting.
Okay.
With the other board members.
Yeah, that's one area that Vanna County isn't doing really well on. Um, and southeastern Idaho as a whole is not doing well on. But thankfully, we have lots of resources being brought to bear to try and address it. So hopefully, we're starting to make some progress. One of the data points that we look at is the number of prescriptions per 100 people that are prescribed in our counties. And we have three of the highest four counties in the state as far as prescriptions per 100 people. So, a- and we look at that because that's an indicator of potentially how much of the product is out in the community, even if it's being prescribed for legitimate purposes initially. Sometimes the prescriptions are large, and so people don't take them all. So then, you know, they end up in a medicine cabinet that, and then end up on the street. So.
He showed how these kids can go on their cellphone and pick up a dealer. I mean, there's ads out there all over the place.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just amazing. And for a buck and a half, they're buying pills.
Yeah.
He shows a couple of kids, one that had died during uh, Coeur d'Alene area, 15 years old. Him and his buddy had bought four pills.
Yeah.
One of them had all the fentanyl.
Well, and that's one of the things that Chief Shai talks about is we just don't know, people don't know what they're getting. And um, even up in Blackfoot this last school year, there were some kids that were vaping, and they had a vape cartridge that was contaminated with fentanyl, and one of them overdosed. It wasn't a fatal overdose, thankfully. Um, but still, that's, it's a pretty scary situation.
Scary stuff.
Yeah. So. Any questions on anything else we can try and answer?
Anything's good. Good information.
No, thank you. Thanks for coming by.
Well, thanks for your time.
Thanks for that information.
Yep. Hopefully, those floodwaters will just keep going down.
How long's your presentation, Dan?
Five minutes.
All right. Come on up. I've got another meeting I gotta go to here. Ten, ten to 10, so I just got a couple ones that I wanna hit.
Dan Kendall, Facilities Director.
Dan Whitworth, Opera. Facilities Operations Director.
Monthly update, maintenance is going well for being so busy and shorthanded. Everything's going well. The custodial contractor continues to be a pleasure to work with, and they're doing a good job. Um, the Safe Teen Center will be completed next week, and we're gonna start moving those guys in on the Monday, the 26th. Wanted to bring up to you guys, we've utilized over 300 hours of community service between the kids and the adult probation. They send helpers over. So uh, we're estimating we saved over 200,000 by doing that building ourselves. So that's turning out fantastic, I think.
I believe it.
Um, the jail boiler, um, so StarCorp submitted estimates to the insurance company. And usually the way it goes is it gets rejected, and then they have to redo something, and they resubmit it, it gets rejected. Kind of a circle thing, but it sounds like they're super close. They hope to have the estimates turned into them and approved by the next meeting on Tuesday. But in the meantime, they're starting work, taking out that soil, replacing it, getting it compacted, getting the drain lines put in, and cause we need to get that concrete put in so it can cure for a month before they start driving on it and putting that equipment in there. So that's kind of where that's at. Still, a little bit frustrating, a little bit slow, but we're definitely on the right path now. So I can see that we're gonna start making some progress.
I had some pretty serious conversation last week with Igram.
Okay. It's, we had one of them in town that did a walkthrough with us, and uh, I still think that if we would, we'd be way farther ahead if we could have started this way in the beginning. So that's just my opinion.
I voiced that too.
But I think we're on the right path now. So hopefully Ryan agrees. He's been helping us out too, so.
It's better.
Okay. Well, if there's anything else you wanna talk about?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you guys.
Thanks.
See you.
The Wiltons. Marilyn? No? Okay. Scott?
Good morning, Commissioner. Scott Crowder, Director Business Manager.
Morning.
I'm Nicole Jorgensen.
So we've done a lot of, we've done a lot of work with Nicole and their company lately. They put on a haunted house for us. They're gonna be doing petting zoo for us the 4th of July. And uh, they have an event that they would like to run, uh, June 23rd and the 24th. This is up in that small grass area and in the, the walking path that's just to the south. We don't have, or to the north of it, I'm sorry. Uh, we don't have a fee for those two areas. Um, so I believe we, we just charged the, the cost of like two soccer fields for the rentals. But do you wanna describe the event?
So the event is kind of a summer promotional for our haunted house. It's a summer scream fest. Um, we're actually bringing together all the haunted houses in Idaho cause kind of the crews and everyone never gets to see each other because we're too busy in October. So we're bringing everybody together in June, and we're gonna have a a little vendor fair and some face painting and magician, things like that.
That sounds interesting.
The best part is at night, then they get to go out and scare people.
So what time of day is this taking place?
Three to nine is the festival part. And then from nine to 11, we'll have the, our usual crew and cast come out to the trees and trails, and we'll haunt them for two hours out there.
What other events we got going on at this time? Can we utilize this?
We have, we have just some rodeos going on at that time. It's, it's uh, we run a concert on the 22nd. And so um, yeah, but typically just our, our rodeo usage that we'll have up there that weekend.
And, and the fee is $1,200.
Yeah. So again, it's just what we charge to rent two soccer fields, which is about the same distance.
Great. Questions?
Nope. Nope. I'm looking forward to this one, and I got two grandkids that will show up there. So, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve this rental contract as presented.
Motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dylan.
Morning. Dylan Evans, landfill manager.
Aubrey Lewis, management assistant.
All right. So we have the Pocatella Women's Correctional Contract that has come up for this year. Most noticeably in it that they've changed the rates a little bit for the pricing, which I'm sure you guys are aware of. Roughly with the same budget line that we have, it takes it from about 102 days of usage to about 76 days of usage, which we think is gonna be pretty sufficient after the COVID shutdown. We're still kind of in the process of getting all the loose ends buttoned up. But we think that it should be uh, pretty, pretty usable for us on, in the future, even with the reduced amount of days. So.
Okay. Any questions?
And this is for next year, or is it starting this, this summer?
Starts in July.
Yeah. So their, their budget cycle is July is their fiscal.
And then you've got budget for this year for this as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And where are you using them at?
Um, so we utilize them for hazardous waste days on, uh, the first Saturday of the month. And then we have them pick up the blown debris and litter. And we've also utilized them for like detailing the equipment, the vehicles, things like that. You know, rainy days, we try and have multifaceted usage for them. But I would say 85% of it is the blown litter that's across the landfill.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, even at the added rate, they're cheaper than paying time and a half for our own employees.
It sure works out nice for us with, it comes with the officers. You direct the officer what needs done, and then they go manage those, the individuals out in the field. So it makes it nice not having to, you know, spend more time trying to keep people lined out. So.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the contract with the D.O.S. Department of Corrections as presented.
A motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Shanda.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer with an update for you today. I'd like to start with the Facilities Janitorial Contract that we're working on. Uh, with Facilities, um, that has been reviewed by the department and submitted to legal for review. So we're ready. That contract won't start until the fiscal year '24. Um, but there are the two changes that we're making. We're adding additional buildings to this request, as well as having an option for two additional years upon appropriation and upon successful contract fulfillment. Are the two caveats that they have in there, are the two changes that we've made this year.
You have an option to, that you can exercise for additional years?
Uh, so we put that in the solicitation this time. Uh, last year, we did a single year. They were trying it out. They weren't quite sure how it was going to work out. Uh, but Dan had liked it so much that they wanted to build in an option for two additional years. So that would be, so '24 would be the first one, '25 and '26. But upon the commission having to approve the budget would have to be there, um, as well as they'd have to perform the contract as it specified. Um, if for any reason Dan felt that there was deficiencies there, uh, then he would be able to term the contract and, and do it differently.
Is it one option for two years?
No, sorry.
It's option, option?
Yes, uh-huh, correct.
And it's at your sole discretion?
No, not mine. Nope.
I mean, at the county's sole discretion is what I meant.
The county, yes. Right? The board has to approve the funds, the department head would have to, the, the, but, or the contract was being fulfilled.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. On the landfill scale house remodel for Engineer Services, that has been approved through legal and is set to publish tomorrow and the following Friday. Uh, we're looking for engineer design firms to design out that scale house and the ways go on that one. For the engineer pool, that project has kicked back off again. I've got a meeting set up with Kyle and Hal and Dan the following week um, to be able to discuss and make sure that all three of those use engineers slightly different. And we want to make sure that we create a pool of engineers um, with a system of choosing from that pool very clearly from the get-go when we have the solicitation to approve those engineers. And so then I want to have a deeper discussion with those three departments and understand uh, their needs, how they would see it working in the future. And so that discussion will happen next week before it moves forward. On the fuels reduction grant contractor, upon further review of the contract that was put before the board last week, it was found that there was an, um, an error in there. On page three of each contract under Article 5, under payments, it was said that it would allow us to keep up 15% of the contract sum back for retainage. That Idaho code won't allow it because of the bond requirement that we had on it. And so upon talking with legal, they suggested that I line through that single sentence and then ask the commissioners to review, approve, and initial that if so desired.
Let's go ahead and do that in a form of a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to instruct the sentence that was identified and authorize signature.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have reviewed and talked with charity as well, um, and just adjusted that on all future ones going forward. On the next solicitation for the gel cleaning chemicals, it was decided that there needed to be some additional time to coordinate the transition from one vendor to the next vendor. And so then that contract was pulled from your Tuesday meeting, and that will be, um, as the Sheriff's Office reports back and said that they're ready to go with that transition period, then we'll go ahead and bring that before the board for signature. On the forensic pathology remodel, there's a couple different pieces of that project. It is rather a lengthy one. Uh, ISU has sent over their original drawings to LCA. And Dottie has also met several times with LCA in regards to the flow of the project and how best to design that facility. And then Hal has reached out to Excel Engineering and do, does expect a report back um, by the end of the month of June as far as the soil goes. And then Dioptra, as far as the survey goes, um, theirs will be a little longer to the middle of July before that report is ready and back to LCA. But they think that is a, a great timeframe for them. And to finalize, I am so excited that some of our winter projects are finally being completed. The Cell 4 Phase 2 landfill expansion has been completed and done, and the final invoice should be come before the board shortly.
That looks great. I was up there the other day, and that looks great.
Good, good. I have only heard great things of the relationship between that contractor and the landfill. So we're excited for the work that was completed and grateful for the sunshine that we could finally finish the project. As well as in the gel, the HVAC for the booking and D-Pod, that's completed as well. They were able to get up on the roof, get it done, coordinate with the replacement of the roof. Um, and so that was a nice to finish up that project as well.
So it says here, budget allocated $95,000.
For, oh, HVAC, okay.
Did I miss one? Anyway, on, on that high back, I track, uh, we assigned in invoices for $110,000.
Okay. So if you do go over to the right, that one I do have, that that's what the big thing is back at.
I didn't pick up my paper far enough.
Right, um.
Weird.
I, we started this project a while ago, so I can't remember exactly, but I am confident that the Sheriff's Office has identified where those other funds were coming.
We did, we did. I just, because I just signed
Right.
that at $110, and I just didn't uncover the other and saw $95.
No, that was pretty. And as far as, as well, we're looking over that financial review piece. Um, I have decided to make some changes to the dashboard going forward. Uh, as I went through and um, submitted for the award for procurement of excellence, they had me identify different um, things to track as far as procurement goes. And I think those are things that would be more beneficial to report to the board. Um, the number of vendors we reached out to. Commissioner Crowder and I have talked about increasing the number to get that competition up. Um, so I think we might report on the number of vendors that we're reaching out to, right? The number of responses we give back, um, the types of solicitations we're doing. Uh, I just think I want it more in line to what the national, you know, companies are doing. And as long as I'm tracking those numbers, um, that I feel that this is a great place to report to the board how each solicitation kind of stands up to the next for that. So um, hopefully next week, there'll be some adjustments to the dashboard as well. If you had any other questions or?
Good. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shanda, um, come see me sometime about this option contract we talked about.
Okay, perfect. Will do. Okay, perfect. Will do.
All right. Let's have you two come up first. I have to apologize. I have to leave here in just a few minutes.
Kristen Borquen, Assistant Director for Planning and Development.
Chase Clark, Building Official for Banna County.
So, we are here with just a quick City Works update. About a month ago, we came before you with our approximate timeline to go live with our new permitting portal. So, we just wanted to update you with that. We have actually decided to push that timeline up. We went live on Monday. After review with City Works and IT, we realized that our data migration portion was going to take longer. So, the fewer applications we had in our current system, the easier that process was going to be for everybody. So, we decided to stop putting in permits into that current software and we're now putting them into the new software as of Monday. So, we just wanted to let you know if you receive an influx of calls of frustrated people trying to figure out the new software, that's why. We did work with Emma, with Public Information Officer, for a new website. So, she's helped us revamp our website a little bit. We actually have a permit portal guide now. GIS was kind enough to give me access to their ArcGIS story maps. So, I now have step-by-step screenshot by screenshot of how to create a login in our new portal, how to apply for specific permits. And I'll just keep adding to that as I create more. So, you can always direct people to our website or to our office if you do get those calls. We also have a feedback link with a Survey Monkey survey to ask people, you know, how easy did you feel it was to create a login? How professional was the new permitting portal? Did you find it difficult to create an application? And those kinds of questions so that we can get some general feedback from people on what they like, what they don't like, and see what we can do to improve as we move forward, so.
And this was the deal that Emma just put out?
Yes.
Saying that everything's ready. This is how you do it now?
Yep, and we've had a successful first week so far. So, fingers crossed, it'll just keep moving in a positive direction.
I haven't heard anything myself.
No, but I do have to commend you for the work on the instructions. I was looking through some of that and you done a lot of work on that. That's, makes it very nice and the redesign of the website, very useful, so good job.
Thank you.
How did your test group go, your beta group, or did you have them long enough to really get much feedback?
We got a little bit of feedback. We, we went through last week and made a big push with all of the issues that we came across during those beta applications and fixed all of those before we went live on Monday. So, I think it was really helpful because there were some pretty big kinks that we ironed out with that beta group. There wasn't a huge pool of information, but I think it was enough to help iron out a lot of the issues that we had.
Yeah, and I know feedback from builders, they were very appreciative to be part of that process. So, just the inviting them to be part of that was kind of a big deal for them. So, they're happy to be part of that.
I commend you for doing that as well.
Thank you.
That's it. Perfect.
Moving your schedule up. Good job. Kudos.
Yeah, we're excited, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Ryan?
Well, I'll be real fast because I, I've been out and had a hard time getting ahold of Valley Office Systems and they finally called me and I was in the airport last night. And so, I can, so anyway, this can be postponed until another meeting. But basically, what this is, is when I moved from the Commissioner's Office in 101 to our current location, a little bit later, we, you guys got a new multipurpose copier and we inherited your old one. And I guess we...
And our camera, the cost with that inheritance.
We did put that into the budget properly. And so, because I think the previous fiscal year, we had split that cost. And then this year, we ended up with all the cost. And then this overage was really high and I have been, part of the reason I'm calling Valley Office Systems is to see if there's something we could do to lower that price, change the overage number. So, I just haven't had time. I thought I would, but I didn't have time to get that sorted out.
Yeah, go ahead and work with it and then work with Christie to figure out what, where funds are.
Okay.
Then we can make a decision.
I just, I got held up, that's all I do.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
So, this tax, property tax request, nobody showed up, so.